All the October 18, 2021, meeting of the Woodbridge Board of Education to order at 7:05 PM. With a reminder to all those watching and participating to kindly mute your microphone to avoid any background noise. This meeting will be held virtually via WebEx and is being recorded. The recording will be available on the district website. At this time, I will call the roll of the board. Please unmute and speak that you are here for those people who are on, who are calling into the meeting and not on a computer so that they know who's present. Thank you. Maria Madonik?
Here.
Sarah Beth Del-
Here.
Dr. Jay Daya?
Here.
Brooke Hopkins?
Here.
Jeff Hughes?
Here.
Dr. David Ross?
Here.
Dr. Michael Strampler?
Here.
Erin Williamson?
Here.
And I'm Lynn Piazek. I'm the chair here. Staff in attendance this evening include Dr. Jonathan Budd, Superintendent, Mr. Richard Huat, Interim Director of Business and Operations, Ms. Cheryl Kuzel, Director of Special Services, Ms. Annalisa Sherman, Principal, Mr. James Sapia, Assistant Principal, and Ms. Marcia DeGenerio, Clerk of the Board. Thank you. We will begin this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance. Brooke, would you like to lead us this evening in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, I would love to.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Brooke. Moving on to 1C. Actually, before I begin, I would just like to make note for public that as part of the Safe Return Update in Dr. Budd's Superintendent Report, which is 3.A.1 on the agenda, a COVID update will be included. Okay. Moving on, correspondence, 1C. Ms. Delpreet, do we have any correspondence?
Sorry, I was trying to unmute. We do have some correspondence from a parent. Was that submitted also? Yes. Okay. Of course, do I need to read the letter or?
I believe just to state that it's included in the Board's packet would be sufficient.
Okay. That it is, okay.
And is that it?
I believe so. Am I missing something?
No, thanks. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you very much, Sarah Beth. Is there any public comment this evening? If you could raise your hand in the participants list? Okay, I'm going to read the statement about public comment. "The Board welcomes public participation and is appreciative of the feedback we receive from the community, whether it is through letters or public comment at meetings. If you are making a public comment at tonight's meeting, please be aware that the Board will not respond to any comments made during the public comment period except to clarify issues. We will take into consideration your comments, and when appropriate, District Administration will follow up with you at a later point in time. We ask that speakers limit their comments to three minutes. Ms. Madonik will serve as the timekeeper this evening." The first person whose hand I see is Josh Gelder. Mr. Gelder, would you please identify yourself and give your address?
Good evening. Josh Gelder, 48 Brookwood Drive. Okay. So first off, I wanted to start off by talking about the opt-in forms that were sent out to the parents for weekly COVID testing. I want to say that I feel this method of giving the parents the power to make important medical decisions for their children is exactly the way that it should be done for all medical decisions concerning our children, including masking. And from what I understand, roughly 10% of the parents decided to opt in here. And since we have still not had a survey sent to the parents, even though it has been requested, I can only surmise that this 10% opt-in rate for testing is somewhat indicative of the overall stance that the parent community has on COVID restrictions at this stage of the game here. And I think this is easy to understand when you take into consideration that Connecticut is consistently leading the country in the lowest number of positive cases. All of our businesses, including state facilities, are back open at 100% capacity. Now, I know that some parents were concerned about the handful of positive COVID tests that we've had at Beecher Road since the start of the school year. But I also think it's important to remember that all of these cases have led to a 100% recovery rate. In the past, I think it's past time that we identify what our path is out of these restrictions for our children here. So to that end, I would like to once again request that a survey be sent out to the parents to ask if they feel that their child should still be forced to wear a mask to school every day, given the extraordinarily low positivity rate and, again, the 100% recovery rate amongst our community. As the Board of Ed for the Town of Woodbridge, it's imperative that you survey the very community that you were elected to serve. Further, I'd like for the Board of Ed to identify what metrics will be used to decide when we end these COVID restrictions. And I understand that you take directives and guidance from the state and from the Cornebyak Valley Health District. That doesn't mean that you can't come up with your own criteria that you think is fair for the Beecher Road community to meet so our kids can go back to a normal school environment. In addition to identifying these metrics, I would also like to see these put into policy. And I'd like to see this policy potentially shared with other towns to show that Beecher Road is truly a forward-thinking group that can do more than just take orders and directives from the state. I know I only have three minutes here, so I'm not going to go into too much more. But recently, the President of the United States came to our state. He was able to take off his mask and proceed to hug multiple kids who also weren't wearing masks, which there's multiple pictures of online, by the way. So with this, I don't feel there's any reason why our kids shouldn't be able to smile at a classmate across the classroom for the first time in a year and a half to almost two years. I moved to this town specifically for the education system, as did the majority of our families here. And Woodbridge has always been a state leader, and I would love for that to continue. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gelder. Would you please put your hand down in the participants list so we know that you're all set for this evening? I'm scrolling through. I don't see any other hands raised this evening. Dr. Budd, can you help me out? And do you see anyone else who has public comment?
Don't see anyone, Lynn.
Thank you very much. We'll move on then to Topic 2 on the agenda, Consent Agenda. The minutes from the September 20, 2021, regular meeting are in tonight's consent agenda along with both a summary and detailed financial report. Is there anything that the Board wishes to extract from tonight's consent agenda? Seeing nothing, may I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Ms. Madonik? Is moving, are you moving that?
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
The approval of the consent agenda is presented. Do I have a second? Jay, thank you. Motion made by Maria Madonik, seconded by Jay Daya. Board members, all those in favor? I'm going to try and do this without a roll call. But if I can't see everyone's hand and it isn't unanimous, I will need to take a roll call. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
You can't see me, I'm in favor.
Thank you, Dr. Ross. That vote is unanimous, Marcia. Thank you. Moving on to number 3 on the agenda, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you very much, Lynn. Thank you very much, Lynn. We have several parts of tonight's report, but first, some introductory parts. Believe it or not, everyone, today is the 30th day of this school year. And we should be very pleased that we have remained open with 100% of students engaged in in-person learning for all 30 of those days. Of course, we have had quarantines of individuals in our community during that time. And I'll speak about that later during the Safe Return Update later on the agenda. But first, I want to give a huge shout out to our school bus drivers. This week marks Bus Driver Appreciation Week, and we cannot thank enough our school bus drivers, who in Woodbridge are independent owner-operators, who have met all state guidelines, including vaccination mandates, and most importantly, have continued to drive our students safely to and from school this year. And so, any parents, guardians, or children who may be listening, please thank your school bus driver this week. As hardworking as our bus drivers are, so too are the members of our own Woodbridge School District staff. And in the upcoming weeks, in addition to continuing their typical outstanding work, our staff will be participating in professional development as well as participating in the staff survey that was deferred from June 2021. As has been reported by numerous media, being an educator in any form is very, very challenging these days. And on behalf of our staff, we appreciate all goodwill from the community as we work very hard to serve the needs of students in this continuing pandemic time. Based on an increase in students with identified special needs, we have needed to reallocate funds to hire an additional special education teacher within the past weeks. We were very fortunate to have Beecher Teacher's Assistant Janet Crisquolo apply for this position. Janet's experience and skill teaching students with special needs will serve our children very well for the remainder of this year. And later in this meeting, as you see on the agenda, Ms. Kuzel will be highlighting key elements of special education at Beecher, including enrollment trends. Later this evening, the Board will be asked to accept with regret the retirement of Beecher Teacher William Letch effective October 31 of this year. And with permission from Bill and his family, I want to spend a moment tonight tributing the significant work of this outstanding educator. Bill Letch served as instrumental music teacher at Beecher Road School starting in 1996. His 25-year tenure in Woodbridge has generated myriad accolades. His supervisors have cited his, quote, "commitment to purpose, noble values, technical expertise, interpersonal awareness, and a mature approach to the position." Bill has modeled professionalism for students and demonstrated self-initiative, pride in his work, and passion for his discipline. Bill has been called, quote, "a wonderful music teacher who continually strives for excellence among his students" and "Beecher's very own music man." In developing an instrumental music program including beginning band, advanced band, jazz band, beginning strings and strings ensemble, Bill has led his students to achieve a depth of sound that has been recognized with accolades both here in Woodbridge as well as regionally at many professional adjudications. In one supervisor's words, Bill, quote, "has raised the level of musical awareness for our students and their parents." And thus, to continue what that person wrote, "The Beecher Road School instrumental music program exceeds the expectation of any elementary school." For the past 25 years, Bill's enthusiasm, can-do spirit, and optimism have made him a key part of the heart and soul of Beecher Road School. And for that, thousands of our students and their families have been the very lucky beneficiaries. Although I personally have never had the opportunity to work with Bill, I've been told by numerous of his colleagues, his students, and his students' families, both current and past, of his enormous impact on their lives. And I know I speak for everyone here and really on behalf of the whole Woodbridge School District in sending Bill all best wishes. I want to also give an update this evening, everyone, on our student enrollment at Beecher Road School. Our October 1 student enrollment count is what gets officially reported to the Connecticut State Department of Education. And that includes 830 students in grades K-6, 19 students in preschool, and one out of district placement, for a total of 850 students. And of interest statistically to you might be this. Of those 850, approximately 55% identify as male, approximately 44% identify as female, approximately 1% identify as non-binary, approximately 65% identify as white, approximately 15% identify as Asian, approximately 9% identify as two or more races, approximately 8% identify as Hispanic or Latino of any race, approximately 3% identify as Black or African-American, and approximately 1% identify as American Indian or Alaska natives. And those are the classifications that the State Department uses. It could be of interest to you. I want to give significant kudos this evening to another group, the members of our Community and Diversity Committee, who sponsored a fabulous table at the October 2 Woodbridge Like Me event held on our town library lawn. It's right alongside tables from the Beecher PTO, civic and political and religious groups in town, and so on. But at this committee's table, there was a diversity book nook. There were activities for visiting children to the table. And ultimately, the table just highlighted how important we feel each and every student is to our Beecher community. Ms. Sherman's going to speak in her report later tonight about upcoming meetings of the Community and Diversity Committee. Connected to our district goal related to diversity, equity, and inclusion, I've joined other Connecticut superintendents in a leadership practice network entitled Leading and Learning About Race Racist Equity. It's a very exciting group that is enhancing both personal and professional understanding of racial literacy with an eye toward application as district leaders. I will share more updates at future board meetings. In other unrelated news, I want to note for the community that just this afternoon, a new beautiful bike rack was installed at the south entrance of Beecher Road School to mirror the similar rack at the north entrance. And funding for this rack came from the Sustainable Connecticut Community Match Grant. And it was organized by the Town of Woodbridge to support the bike racks at the Fitzgerald Trail and on the Green, similar racks. And obviously, this helps support those students who safely bike to Beecher. And I see Dr. Martinello nodding on this call, building a habit that will last them their whole lives. To conclude this little introductory segment of my report, as we correctly heard earlier, approximately 100 Beecher families have volunteered for the COVID-19 screening testing to be done at Beecher via the State Department of Public Health. And the timelines we're following are the DPH timelines. But we anticipate that testing will begin by the end of this month. Any families interested in joining this voluntary program who haven't already signed up? More information and the state-required consent form is available on our website under the Safe Return webpage. I have additional comments with Dr. Martinello to share this evening specific to the Safe Return Update. But Lynn, perhaps it's best to pause here for a moment for unrelated questions, questions unrelated to that. That's the board to have.
Thank you, Dr. Budd. Are there any board members who have questions on Dr. Budd's overview of the last month and his presentation up to this point? Brooke? Brooke, you're breaking up.
Brooke, I can't be seen, I'm sorry.
Okay. Go ahead. We can hear you now.
Okay. Can you hear me? Okay. I just, I have a question. I know 100 children have signed up for this test that will begin the end of the month. Tell me again what the funding is for that. I'm wondering, how is this going to be administered without the teachers having to have interference of, you know, the children? They can't have general instruction, can't miss recess, can't miss lunch. Just wondering, why again are we doing this in the school system?
Yeah, so thank you, Brooke, for that. The funding is through, my understanding is, the federal government funneled through the state. And so that's the most direct answer to that part of the question. All school districts have been asked to, all elementary school districts have been asked to participate in this program to give parents the opportunity to participate. So in consultation with our medical advisor and QVHD, we offered the option. Surely, you're right that students who participate will be tested rather than doing something else during the school day. Logistically, we'll try to keep the impact to learning minimal. But one of the details we still are working out with DPH personnel is exactly how long the diagnostic health people will be in the building. And obviously, we have to get the students to them and get them back. So I cannot say that for students who participate in the program, there wouldn't be any impact on their instructional time. We obviously will seek to minimize it and not impact negatively the non-participating students' instructional time.
Gotcha, thank you. So our teachers don't have to administer it? There will be somebody from the Health Department that comes in to do that?
Well, yes. I mean, the people from the Health Department are coming in, but the actual administration is by the students.
By the child, right.
It is self-swabbing. And there is a lovely animated video available on our website, produced by somebody outside here with a large-
Is this swabby?
Swabby. It's exactly who it is.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I don't mean to make a laughing matter. This is a very serious matter, and it'll be self-swabbing. Now, just in case people are wondering, we certainly have four-year-olds and five-year-olds. And actually, the largest proportion of the 100 families are kindergarten families. It might be of interest to you. And certainly with those students, there will be somebody assisting them at the beginning to get the routine of how to do this. But not the teacher, not the teacher. Yep.
Thank you.
Dr. Budd, can I just ask, if a family has opted in and then they do not want to continue, can they opt out at any time?
Yes, at any time. It's fluid in and out as the weeks and months progress. Yep.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Is there a set end date or anything like that? Is this a trial period? Do you see this going the whole academic year?
I don't have any information on that, Jeff, to be honest with you. I'm sure that when the funding runs out, they'll be reevaluating. But they're encouraging the startup of this program across the state. I don't think that they've thought about that last piece of it yet.
Any other board questions? Erin?
I have a question. It's not about the swabbing, so I didn't know if any.
That's great.
You had mentioned a survey. Is that the Panorama survey that we had done with the students and the families, but not the teachers?
Exactly.
Okay. And is that? No, 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 no. So that, you're expecting to send that out in the next couple of weeks?
Yeah, we're expecting, we typically for staff give time during the workday to complete that. So there's going to be an opportunity in the next couple of weeks for that time to come during meeting time.
Okay, great. And then at one point, and I forget where I got this information, but I know you had talked about sharing some of that raw data with possibly the committee that Mike is sharing, that I'm not sure the current name of. But the, yep, that committee. And I was wondering if it's possible for the board members to also receive a copy of the raw data that we have so far from the students and the families? I just, I'm cognizant that we're going into strategic planning time. And I'm cognizant that as a board member, I think the more data that I have, the better in terms of what families are thinking and wanting and students are thinking and wanting.
I think it's a possibility for sure. And perhaps just if I could suggest holding the possibility, because Dr. Wilson's going to speak a little later on this agenda about her recommendations for surveying and getting wide stakeholder feedback as part of strategic planning for those groups. One of the challenges we've talked about with the student and the family survey in particular was a relatively low response, I mean, lower response rate than we would want. And I believe in hearing from the board and in talking to Judy, there can be methods to get wider participation on some key issues. We also have, as you know, one of the district goals relates to surveying specifically on issues related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And that's going to really require some more specific honing than was done earlier.
Sure, great. And then this is more of a technical question. I'm just not familiar with the Panorama survey. Does the Panorama survey ask whether people are administrators versus, you know, kindergarten teachers versus, you know, special ed instructors? Like, are we going to be able to parse out that data to have a sense of how respondents may differ based on either job function or a position within the school? Or is it all, does it all come together? And are kind of demographic questions in terms of position not asked on it?
It's in the middle of that. There is, there are some questions that are particular just to teachers and other questions that are given to all staff. So the real division there is simply whether somebody is in the teaching group or in the non-teaching group. But it doesn't demographically distinguish more than that, in my recollection.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Erin. Maria?
Thank you. To piggyback on what Erin said, you know, we've gotten some great data from our community, and we've gotten some great data from the parents and the students. But we haven't heard from one of the most important parts of our district, and that's our staff and our administration. So when, is there a timeline where we might hear about that information separate from the strategic planning and update?
Right. I think that's what we're talking about implementing in the next couple of weeks and finding a meeting time, you know, time during the workday that staff can do that.
Thank you.
Am I understanding your question correctly? Yeah.
So just for clarification, Jonathan, what's the turnaround time once that survey is given in the next couple of weeks? What's the turnaround time for those results to come back to the district?
Fairly expeditious for the results. And then it would be the work of the administrators to help organize them, assemble them into some type of meaningful report. So relatively quickly.
Great. Does that help everyone who was concerned about timeline? Good. Any other questions or comments? I don't see any hands. Dr. Ross, are you all set?
Yeah, I'm trying wrestling with what that actually just meant. If we pin down the timeline, if you're saying you're going to reserve the time in the next couple of weeks and then, quote, "expeditiously," does that mean we'll have results by the next board meeting? Or when do you actually expect to have results in our hands that we can look at and discuss?
Yeah, I would think administration would give some kind of report at the November board meeting, potentially, for sure.
Okay, that's great, thank you. And I guess one other question. Did you say that Dr. Martinello is going to be commenting separately?
Well, she's going to be talking with me in this next piece of the presentation.
I have questions for her, but I'll save that. That's great. Thank you.
Okay, just for clarification, David, I think that's 3.A.1 Safe Return Update. We haven't quite gotten there yet.
Sorry, was having trouble keeping track.
I know. Okay, so I think we're set on the general report. I have just one comment to make. I want to thank you, Dr. Budd, for acknowledging the work that our bus drivers in our district do. I think all of us have seen the news with many districts who have transportation systems that are just really not functional. And our bus drivers and our bus companies, the owner-operators that service us, haven't missed a beat. They've kept up with all of the mandates from the state. And so, as the board chair, I would hope that we would, because I don't see any bus drivers in the participants list, but I would hope that we would pass that information on to those people who care so deeply about our schoolchildren and the community as a whole. Thanks. Moving on to 3.A.1 Safe Return- dot A dot one, safe return update, which will include a COVID update for those people who are watching.
Sure, and I'm just going to get over to a moment to share something with you all. One second, please. So just a brief presentation here, and Ms. Sherman will amplify a few parts of it, and Dr. Martinello will amplify some others. But in terms of our process for reopening, I would remind the board that we have, as the government has required, a safe return committee that has regular meetings. The board representatives on that committee are Ms. Piazek and Ms. Madonik. We have a staff forum scheduled for later this week and a parent guardian forum scheduled for Thursday night at 7:00 this week. Those are virtual forums, and those are opportunities, obviously, for us to present some of the changes that we're going to talk about on the next slide, also to get feedback from those different constituents and to answer really specific questions that might be asked. We had a safe return committee meeting last week to review key highlights. And five of them are organized on the next slide that seem like the most pertinent updates to talk about, or six of them, I should say. So since our last meeting as a board, the governor required that public school staff be vaccinated or submit to weekly testing. Over 95% of our staff is fully vaccinated, and that goes slightly up every week that passes. And those who are not fully vaccinated, they're complying with the weekly testing requirements. The second bullet, as has been mentioned, the governor extended the mask mandate for all public school buildings in Connecticut through mid-February 2022, and that applies to all students and adults and visitors with the exception of those who have approved exemptions for medical reasons, a fairly small group. To date, including a quarantine that began today, we've had 11 quarantines of what we call here BRS community members, meaning that those are people within our community here at Beecher who were positive at a time when they were at Beecher. There are no confirmed cases of in-school transmission, by which I mean nearly all of those 11 are specifically traced to out-of-school transmission. And we don't have anywhere we know that there has been in-school transmission. And in fact, the actual 11 who have tested positive have been really in quite different groups from one to the next. I'm just going to mention briefly these last three, and then Lisa's going to talk with more detail. She toured our building last week with three representatives from our partner, the Quinnipiac Valley Health District. They gave positive feedback for what they saw at Beecher Road School. We're making two adjustments this week that seem appropriate based on where we see the school at the moment. One is that the cafeteria will be gradually reopened for in-person eating. At the moment, all students have been eating in their classrooms, but there's good reason to open the cafeteria, including for the social needs of kids. And then our grade six classes, where the students departmentalize across three teachers, rather than the teachers moving from class to class, we're going to go to the system of the students moving from room to room, which is more middle-school-like and supportive. So perhaps, Lisa, if you want to just amplify those last three, I think that could be helpful. And then we'll ask Dr. Martinello to share her thoughts also.
Definitely. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share some information with you. I want to start by talking about the QVHD visit, which was incredibly positive. It is always such a joy for me to show off Beecher Road School and to brag about the hard work that our teachers and students are doing every single day. Even when the bragging is about mitigation strategies, it's still fun. They were really quite impressed with all of our mitigation strategies, our social distancing, our mask-wearing, our hand-washing. We visited classrooms at every single grade level, often multiple classrooms. And we also visited additional spaces, including the gym, the cafeteria, different special areas like music and Spanish. So we really got to see the entire building. They got their steps in for sure, and it was an overwhelmingly positive response from them. And we were really happy that we were able to show them the good work that we're doing to keep our entire community really, really safe. So based on that visit and the information that we have received just from teachers and students, we will be gradually reopening our cafeteria. Now, when I mention that, hopefully you can all picture that cafeteria, even though you may not have been there recently. It is really quite large, so we are used to holding close to 200 students in that cafeteria. We're not going to do anywhere close to that to start with. We are looking to hold about two classes in there. Our amazing Mr. Sapien has developed a schedule that he will be sharing out with teachers that allows the same two classes to remain in the cafeteria, one on either side. So there will be one class on one side, one class on another side. So there will still be plenty of physical distance, plenty of spreading out. The tables do still all have the shields on them. Students will be assigned seats and assigned tables so that they stay in one spot. And they will be able to begin entering the cafeteria and returning to eat there. We're going to start with two classes, and if that changes in the future and we add an additional class, we will let you know. QVHD did support this move. They actually suggested even more. But, you know, we are going to start with a smaller group. We're going to start with just two classes to see how we do. The next thing that I want to mention that Dr. Bud touched upon is that our grade six classes, as I'm sure so many of you know, are operating in a departmentalization structure. And the students are going to go back to, are going to start switching the classrooms in order to engage in this departmentalization process. So they will have one classroom for science, one classroom for social studies, et cetera. So I will mention that when they switch, it will be a very supervised and orderly process. Unlike in other years where the students were walking freely amongst the hallways, the teachers are actually walking them safely in between classrooms to just help maintain that physical distancing and to keep the students in orderly procession. So it will be a safe and orderly supervised transition, but they will begin switching this week, starting this week. I think that's it for me.
Thanks, Lisa. And, hold on one second. Stop sharing that, so perhaps you have more room on your screen. We're fortunate to have for at least a little bit of her time tonight, Dr. Shannon Martinello, who is the district's medical advisor, who is just an invaluable part of our team. She supports us just like QBH does. She's been a key part of the Safe Return Committee, as well as kind of day-by-day or week-by-week decisions in speaking and hearing some of the concerns. Dr. Martinello might frame some key issues for you, and then any of us would be happy to answer any questions that the board members might have. So we're really pleased, Shannon, to have you with us again tonight. Thank you.
Sure, no problem. So I just wanted to, you know, basically reiterate a lot of what Dr. Bud said in terms of, like, Beecher has done a great job, the teachers, the staff, the bus drivers, like, everybody from soup to nuts has done a really good job with the reopening committee. I know that the nurse's office is working double-time these days, and, you know, their efforts should be applauded. This is a really challenging thing to manage. Every single case is a different scenario. You know, this has been sort of mind-boggling in my own private practice as well, that there's no cookie-cutter answers to any of this. Every single scenario is different, you know, involving buses, involving after-school, involving car pools, involving friends, involving extracurriculars, like, involving family members and who lives with whom. And it's really been a challenging year for, you know, all of the healthcare providers. So I do fully agree with, you know, Quinnipiac Valley Health District's, you know, thumbs up for the school. They have done a really nice job. I am in agreement with the reopening of the cafeteria. When I first heard it, I kind of had a little palpitation, thinking the whole cafeteria would be full. I think it's a really great idea to start getting the kids back into and have a little more normalcy, if you will, in their school day in a safe way, you know. So that space is really big, has really good ventilation. And I think it actually does make sense to have a couple of classrooms in there for a little bit more of, you know, regular school-day type activities. So we'll see how that goes. I think the other thing that, you know, I did want to throw out there was the, you know, a plug for the weekly testing. The school systems that have done this, you know, not just in Connecticut, but on a national level. You know, we know that these layers of mitigation make a huge difference. And so we, since we don't have, and maybe soon we'll have, I hope, but we don't have vaccines for this age group of kids yet. So that would be the, you know, the biggest and greatest change that we might have this year. But all the other mitigation strategies make a huge difference. The masking, there is no question that the masks are effective. You know, hands down, and I was just in a meeting last week, you know, a national meeting of pediatricians, this was clearly the topic. And, you know, we, as tens of thousands of pediatricians putting their heads together last week, we are not seeing any adverse effects from masking. We are seeing that the schools that mask, it makes a huge difference in terms of transmission and keeping schools open safely. But that doesn't mean all the other things don't matter. School systems that are in communities that have high vaccination rates, the higher the vaccination rate of adults in the community, the less cases we see in the school system. That just sort of makes sense. School systems that mask and do weekly screening tests do far better than school systems that only do one of those layers of strategizing. I will share with you, I was talking with a Beecher family not too long ago, whose kids were in preschool last year, and the parents approached me and said, you know, the preschool last year, the kids did the swab every week, and like, they picked up a couple of cases through the year, they were able to shut down effectively. We had no big closures for the school, you know, why can't we do that at the grade school level? And that was when it was first in the talks, and I said, you know, hang on to that thought, we may be doing that at some point. And it really does work as a great mitigation strategy. What is different right now with COVID compared to where we were a year, a year and a half ago is that, you know, back in 2020, when pediatric cases were making up only a small percentage of COVID cases, in the last several months since schools have reopened in the US and Delta has reared its ugly head, pediatric cases are now 20% to 30% of all positive cases of COVID. So it is a game changer in the world of pediatrics. We had, you know, not gobs of kids last year that we were, you know, we were seeing positive. We had plenty. I mean, it was more than I wanted to see, but it is a lot more this year. Pediatric hospitals, which were basically ghost towns last year, have been full to capacity in many places around the country this year. And the risk to children while lower, and I think that's fabulous, and thank goodness that is the case. The risk is not zero. Kids are being affected by COVID. Kids are getting sick. Kids are getting long hauler syndrome with COVID. We've had now over 520 kids in the US have died this year, since the beginning of the pandemic with COVID. Over 30% of those kids had no other comorbidities. They were otherwise healthy kids. So it's not an insignificant risk. You know, we vaccinate and take preventive measures for other public health issues that actually have less risk to kids than with COVID. And all we've got for kids right now is masking, ventilation, distancing, and vaccinating the people around them. The mental health piece can't go without being addressed. That has been a huge factor of the pandemic. And that's been across the spectrum. I, you know, sort of, when I'm talking to families on a multiple-times-per-day basis lately about mental health issues, it's preschoolers, it's grade schoolers, it's middle schoolers, it's high schoolers, it's college kids, and it's parents and grandparents, too. I mean, this is not, you know, this has not been a small impact with the pandemic. So I think anything and everything that we can do to keep kids in school and keep them on their regular routine and get them back doing some normal things throughout the day, I think is really going to be, you know, have huge benefits for kids. I also want to do a quick shout-out to the nursing staff again for their incredibly hard work this year. Their job is not easy. They are, you know, dealing with kids who may have a cold, may have COVID, may have allergies, may just be sneezing because they got dust in their nose or breathed in fuds from their mask. It is really hard to tell. We are standardly, in my practice and many other practices that I chat with, you know, we can't tell who has what based on symptoms. We have had kids with nothing more than a scratchy throat for a couple of hours and then seemed fine, test positive for COVID. We've seen kids with 104 fevers and bad cough who haven't had COVID. So the range is way too gray, you know, and the Venn diagrams of all of these illnesses are way too overlapping to be able to make a good guess. And the risk of having a case of COVID that goes undetected and potentially spreads and infects other kids or teachers or family members or community members, we have to be cautious. So we are testing kids in our office, anyone who has any one of a variety of symptoms. I mean, my standard line is, you know, if you have a sprained ankle, we won't swab you for COVID. But anything other than that, you're probably going to get a COVID test. If you have a sprained ankle and a stuffy nose, you are getting a COVID test. So we are testing lots of kids. So the nurses are going to have to be sending home a lot of kids. I implore you to please get flu vaccines. If we get COVID vaccines available for kids, please consider getting your kids vaccinated. I would also say if your kids have a sniffle or a runny nose or a cough that's new, please keep them home, get them tested, and that way, if they're negative, we can get them back to school as soon as they're feeling better. I would also say that, you know, the symptoms don't have to be severe for us to be triggered to test for COVID. You don't have to have a fever to have COVID. You don't have to have a rash. You don't have to have a sore throat. Like, any of those symptoms can be overlapping. If your child has allergies, please treat your child's allergies, because a kid who's coughing, sneezing, runny nose, who comes into the nurse's office because they're coughing, sneezing, and runny nose, they're going to get sent home, and that is the appropriate thing to do. And I've been fielding these calls, not just from Beecher. I do some consulting for preschool. They have to do the same thing. I'm doing some consulting for a high school. They're doing the same thing. So this is not specific to Beecher. On that note, as we have Thanksgiving, Halloween, and Thanksgiving upcoming, time to really be thoughtful and cognizant of risk mitigation in our gatherings. I'm very pleased to see that the Hoot is a drive-through event this year and not an in-person event. You know, anything that we can do that minimizes mixing cohorts of kids is going to be helpful. The cases we've had in our office, the most common scenarios that we've seen are kids getting sick from either unvaccinated parents, from family gatherings where there are unvaccinated members, from daycare, we've had a lot of daycare center closures lately, a ton since August for the kids two and under who can't mask. They are, there is daycare spread. I mean, this is not, you know, this is not an uncommon scenario. And in the daycare centers who do have policies of, you know, they can still attend if they only have a runny nose, those are the ones that I think have had more trouble with COVID spread within their daycares and have had to close down. So please, you know, please try to minimize your overlapping of kids and mixing groups and whatnot. Please consider having kids enroll in the weekly testing. I think it's going to only give us more information and keep us on top of things in a quicker way. And, you know, please, if you are not vaccinated, consider vaccinating, and please consider vaccinating your kids when it becomes eligible. I will tell you, our four kids, when we talk about vaccine and vaccine risk, it seems that the one standout for young adults has been myocarditis in older adolescent and young males. Our four kids fall into that exact category. I have four boys. They are all teenagers, two young adults. The risk of getting myocarditis, that is significant and will, you know, land you in the ICU, is tremendously higher from getting a COVID infection. We felt that the risk of getting the vaccine was still a much safer option. There is no zero-risk option between vaccinating and unvaccinating. The choices are basically get a vaccine, have a very good chance of doing very well when you ultimately get exposed, because this isn't going away and we will all ultimately get exposed, versus not vaccinating and running the risk of getting incredibly Versus not vaccinating and running the risk of getting incredibly sick, giving it to someone who is immune compromised, getting them incredibly sick. And the risk is always going to be better with getting the vaccine than not. So that's my two cents.
Thank you very much, Dr. Martinello. Always appreciate your insight. Thank you, Dr. Bud. I'm going to start and we'll go round to the board members to see if they have any questions or comments. I'll start with Brooke.
Thank you, Lynn. Thank you for that report as well. So the question I have is, I know I was doing some research. October 6th, the Connecticut Children's Hospital has reported, and I, I do work in the field, that there's a new surge in the mental health front due to children isolating. And so if we are going to keep the child home every time there's an allergy related or we send kids home for a cold, they're isolating at home and again, not being educated. So how do we, with 10%, I guess of the families concerned enough to do the test in school, how do we address that with the possibility of so many absences coming up, I guess? It seems, there only seems to be one way or the other here. It doesn't seem like there's a middle line where years past, kids would go home with the flu. But I, I don't know, I guess, I'm, I'm not happy with the idea that kids are just sent home because of maybe allergies or they, you know, have a sniffle. I don't know what the answer is, but I don't like that response.
This has been a real challenge for everyone in pediatrics. I mean, from the emergency rooms to the schools, to the daycares, to the high schools. I mean, th- this is the challenge that we have. And so, you know, we've been telling families, you know, to please try and get on top of their, the kids who have known fall allergies, you know, get them on their nasal sprays, get them on their Zyrtec or their Claritin or whatever they take to manage their allergies, you know, minimize that as much as we can. But it is near impossible to decipher who's going to be positive for COVID and who's going to be, who's not going to be when we have symptoms. I mean, this is the predicament that we are in right now. It's not unique to Beecher. I mean, this is, this is the concern and the, you know, sort of frustration that all of us have in healthcare right now. But I, I, I'm not sure that there's a fabulous way around it. Now, if we, you know, had our community vaccination rates higher and when the vaccine isn't eligible for kids and we get a good substantial number of kids in our school system vaccinated, that really may be a game changer. Like that, we can start backing off on a lot of these other things. But right now, the risk of, you know, a kid with a scratchy throat who has a little bit of a cough and a runny nose is being allowed to stay in school and then get on the bus or go to the after-school program and then find out a couple of days later that, oh, you know, this was actually COVID and now we've got not just his cohort, but his bus and his this and his that and his extracurricular folks have all been exposed. It, it, it blossoms pretty quickly.
Anything else, Brooke? I think we might have lost Brooke.
She said no, she unmuted.
Thank, thank you, Jeff. David, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, thanks. Two, two questions. The, the first was for Jonathan. You were presenting the data from school. You said that there were 11 infections and, uh, uh, help me understand because I, I might not have followed exactly what you said. But it, it sounded like you said that there was no transmission within the school because those 11 cases were tracked to outside exposures?
Most of the 11, David, were definitively or as definitively as possible tracked to out-of-school exposures. And with the remaining few, we have no evidence that there was in-school transmission.
Right, but it, my understanding is there's 200 plus individuals who were quarantined because of exposure to those 11 individuals. And so I'm curious what data we have about outcomes with those individuals. Because we may or may not have any idea whether, how many of those individuals actually wound up testing positive later? Or, or am I missing some part of the data here?
Well, all of the individuals, if they test positive, are supposed to report that test result to us. And so we don't have evidence of more than those 11, if I'm understanding your, your question or your point correctly.
That, that is the question. So, so of those 230 whatever, none of them tested positive afterwards? That's what you're saying?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, that's great news. I mean, and, and again, so, so thank you and, and to the school and the team. And, and Shannon, I really appreciate the very detailed review, particularly the efficacy around mitigation strategies. The other just minor question that I, I was just hoping you could comment on, you alluded to, but the, the percentage of cases in kids that result in long, long haul syndrome. My, my understanding from the data at this point from a review in Beecher relatively recently is, is the estimate is somewhere in the vicinity of 10%?
I think there's a lot of different studies giving a wide range of numbers. So, you know, I've seen as little as 4% and as high as 30%, you know, but it's not 0%. You know, it is, it is a significant number. And when it is your kid, it is a very significant number, it's 100%. I would say the, you know, the most common things that we've seen in our practice, we have seen kids with acute kidney injury and long, you know, sort of long-term kidney issues that have, from a COVID, a very mild COVID, stuffy nose, runny nose last January. And this poor child is still dealing with pretty significant kidney disease as a result of that. We have seen kids who have had significant problems with weight loss and inability to eat because not just the loss of taste and smell, but everything to them now tastes and smells awful. So we've had kids who have lost tremendous amounts of weight and were having a really hard time getting them to eat anything. And this is three, four, or five months post-COVID. So, you know, the actual number, you know, it's, it's hard to know where this is ultimately going to pan out. And some of the studies were only done like in the UK or in other countries. So, but it's not zero, for sure. There is a, a, at least small percentage of kids who are having long haul symptoms. We had one child who had a fever for almost 120 days, every single day for three months, four months, had a fever. You know, unpleasant stuff to be living with.
Yeah. So, so I mean, I, I guess the take-home is, it seems the vigilance is well warranted, especially heading into winter months when we've seen spikes consistently in cold weather. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
I, I had, I had been committed to another meeting that started at eight o'clock a while ago. So if there's any last minute questions, I can stay on for another minute or so, but I'm getting pinged because I'm late to my other meeting, so I apologize.
All right. Is there any board member who I haven't called on yet that has a question of Dr. Martinello?
What? Yeah, I have one question. Sorry. Dr. Martinello, one of the questions that I have that some people have brought up is wearing masks outside and whether that's necessary. And I know in a lot of summer programs, summer camp programs, that wasn't required this summer. And so I'm wondering whether that is a mitigation strategy that's necessary, continues to be necessary, given what we know about COVID? Or whether that's one we might want to reconsider?
Um, yes and no. So, you know, last summer, that was pre-Delta. So Delta did change the game a little bit. It is a much more contagious variant than what we had going on last year. So the risk is by far lower outside. I mean, there's no question about it, outside is a better place to be. But, you know, it depends on the activity outside. If kids are sitting around, like I remember playing jacks in grade school and sitting around and we all had our heads together and we were bouncing the ball and picking up the, the jacks. You know, that would be something I would encourage kids to wear masks. If they're in close proximity to each other for a period of time, probably should wear a mask. If the kids are going to be sitting on a bench and chatting, they should probably have masks on. If they're, you know, out in an open field and tossing a ball around and they're only going to kind of pass haphazardly, that's probably a less risky thing to do. I will tell you, when I'm, you know, walking on the trails in Woodbridge, I have my mask. And if people are approaching me and we're going to path, cross paths, I put my mask on. And then I wait until I'm a good distance, you know, past them. You know, sort of funny aside, when I was dropping my son off at college this year and he was, you know, asking me that exact question, like what if we're just hanging out outside, do I need to wear a mask? And there was a gentleman about 20, 30 feet in front of us who was vaping. And he kept, you know, poofing out his vape and you could see the cloud. And we have masks on and we're walking on a city street with our masks on. And he was 20 feet in front of us. And as we approached, I said to him, you know, do you smell that? Do you smell that guy's vape? And he said, yeah. I said, do you see how far ahead of us he is? He said, yeah. I said, that was in his lungs 30 seconds ago and we are walking through that. So, you know, what we don't see doesn't scare us, but when you see it, you're like, you know, stuff does sort of sit out there for a bit. So, you know, I think it really depends on the activity. There is no question that outside is a better, safer place to be. And if kids are going to be sort of, you know, running all over the place and, and, you know, having fun, great. I would say, you know, maybe we don't need to be so rigid with the masks. But if they then come together because someone finds a cool rock and hey, check this out and, you know, look what I just found, and now 10 heads are all together and they're chatting about this cool rock that they found, you know, I'd want them to have masks on, you know, though, this is, this is the challenge of all of this. It is really hard and there's no concrete answer to any of this. I think we do the best that we can with the information that we have and the information is changing on a week-to-week, day-to-day basis. So, you know, that's the best answer I can give. When I'm outside and I'm on the blue trail and people approach me, I put my mask on. I don't, I prefer not to breathe other people's air.
Shannon, do you have time for Maria's question?
Sure. I'll just blame you guys for being late.
Thank you, Dr. Martinello. I've had a question about vaccination rates for our community and perhaps that, questions about that being a guideline for changing mitigation strategies. The Department of Public Health, the Connecticut Department of Public Health has Woodbridge's vaccination rate at about 75% as of about a week ago. And I've seen some literature from around the country where, you know, areas that had vaccination rates upwards of 90% were able to almost completely relax mitigation strategies without spreads. And I, but that information now, you know, as you said, things are changing day, on a daily basis. That information that I have is probably from about last spring. And I know things have changed since then. I was wondering if there were any recommendations that you or your colleagues had for a community vaccination rate that might allow us to change our mitigation strategies for those that can't be vaccinated?
Yeah, I don't think that our Department of Health has given us their like definitive number on that. And again, you know, Delta threw a total wrinkle into all of this because if you had asked me that question last spring and we were at 90% vaccination rate, I would probably be saying, yeah, we can really start doing a little bit more now. And then Delta came along. So, you know, as far as an exact number, I think, you know, because our percentage of vaccinated students at Beecher right now is zero, we can't, we can't relax when it's zero. You know, if we can get 75, 80% of our students vaccinated and we can get our community rates up to 85, 90%, I think that's a whole different ballgame that we're dealing with, barring any new variants or, you know, whatever that I just cross my fingers every day we don't have to deal with.
Thank you very much, and thank you so much for your time and for your report. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Jeff?
Dr. Martinello, I, I know you have to go. Thank you for your time tonight. One quick question, do you know why we're quarantining whole classrooms and surrounding towns are not?
Yeah, so this has been a hot debate. And, you know, I think that right now, what we are being guided with the Department of Health in Connecticut is, you know, especially in a grade school setting where there are centers and there are group activities and there are puzzles and games and, you know, playing jacks on the playground outside. You know, it's really hard to know where that 15 minutes is in terms of, you know, close contact monitoring. It's also been a little bit more of a concern because we know that Delta is more transmissible. So, you know, a lot of the early data was based on past strains. Now we've got a different strain. I don't think we have all the data yet. And then, you know, it, it is a real challenge, you know? I mean, I, I think I was in agreement with, you know, moving the kids to sitting in the classrooms three feet from each other. But the three-foot, you know, rule versus the six-foot rule, I mean, 10 feet safer than six, six feet safer than three. Like there's no question about all of that. But that translation into, you know, who gets quarantined and who doesn't when someone is positive and has to isolate. The data only is looking at children who are sitting still, working at their desk, doing nothing else in the classroom. So that goes right back to that six feet of interaction when you're talking about walking through the hallways and going to the restroom and going out for recess and eating lunch and doing snack and doing group activities. You know, then we're back to that six-foot rule again. And kids within a classroom, I think it's really hard to know as they're doing things all throughout the day and moving to different centers and doing all of their things. You know, how can we really quantify who is close to who for up to 15 minutes in a, in a day? I do think that, that is something that will probably get better in the upcoming months once we, you know, crossing fingers in November are able to, you know, to get kids vaccinated. And I think that that might be one of the first things that we can make some changes on. But I think it's just a challenge right now. And the guidance from the Department of Health right now is, this is basically where we are.
So i- is, is the town of Orange in a different health district? Because their elementary schools don't quarantine whole classrooms, but ours do.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I can't speak to what they're doing throughout their school day and if their kids are sitting still in their desks all day and not crossing paths. I just can't imagine that kids aren't in each other's spaces for at least minutes at a time throughout the day. And how do we quantify that 15 minutes? I mean, I, I just think that's almost an impossible task to task our teachers with. And I, I do think that is something that is worth reconsidering in the upcoming months when we start getting kids vaccinated.
Thank you.
All right, so Shannon, since you have another meeting, I'm, I'm going to make this suggestion. I hope the board will go along with this. We're going to let you go. This is my suggestion. We're going to let you go to your other meeting. I'm going to ask Dr. Bud if he would write down the questions that board members have and that perhaps we could get answers from you on those questions shared.
Sure.
What, is that okay?
Sure.
Reasonable, board members? Great. Okay, Shannon, thank you so much. I really appreciate your time.
Sure, bye-bye.
All right, so we're going to go back to Erin. If you had any other questions of either Dr. Bud or a question you want forward to Dr. Martinello.
I do, you caught me with a piece of candy in my mouth, bud. I do. No, I do. I guess as a follow-up to Shannon's, you know, noting that things may change once our student body starts to get quarant, or starts to get immunized. I'm wondering if we are in communication, kind of who we're looking to as a model for what might change once our student body starts to get vaccinated? Are we looking towards Amity Middle School? Are we looking towards other? I think, I think giving parents a sense of what might change if and when their children get vaccinated might at least provide some parents a sense of, okay, this is going to change, this is going to come to an end, this is not Groundhog Day. Now, I, granted, I know not every parent is looking to immediately get their kid vaccinated, but I do think it would be helpful information to say, you know, this is what the middle and high schools have done. This is what we're looking to do. For example, my understanding is at the high school level, if you've had a close contact, but you've been vaccinated, you don't actually have to quarantine. Are we looking to mirror that at Beecher Elementary? Things like that. Or if you're, if you are vaccinated, do you have to wear masks outside? And again, I know that this can become complicated because you're now working with a population that might be half vaccinated, half unvaccinated and teachers, you know, not wanting to play the masking police. But I think just being a little proactive and getting a sense of what we are going to do, since we know this is our future, might be helpful. The other question that I have is whether there is any update on the nurse supervisor position? Um, the other question that I have is whether there is any update on the, um, nurse supervisor position. And, um, again, I, I, you know, I think Lisa, you deserve a ton of kudos for, um, you know, and, and Jonathan, you too, but Lisa, you, your staff, the, the t- individual teachers deserve a lot of kudos for addressing COVID in what, what is on top of your regular duties of teaching our children, of making sure they receive proper education and are kept safe and learn how to be amazing human beings. So I, I cannot imagine the stress that you and your teachers carry into that school on a daily basis. The, the stress that you deal with every time you have a kid with sniffles and you don't know when you're sending that kid to the nurse, whether it's COVID or whether it is, um, you know, the allergies. But I am cognizant that as we go through a, you know, an, a pandemic, that the nursing staff is such a critical component to our school. And my understanding is that we've been without a nursing supervisor for, um, somewhat of an extended period here. And I'm just wondering what, where we are in that process and what our mitigation strategies are in the event that it takes us another month or two months. Is Shannon Martinello available to us on call? Are we utilizing that service? Are there other services we need to be utilizing? Because that seems to be a major hole in our system, given the current situation.
Yeah, I, I think perhaps Lynn in reference to that, Lisa, Lisa was actually getting in touch with me. I, I wonder if, if we could have Lisa speak to the mask issue outdoors because we think there may be a misconception. My, my actual observation and what Lisa's confirming is that students do not need to wear masks outdoors. Although, although some do because that's their preference and then teachers do not require them to take them off. But, but Lisa, can you speak to that a little bit more?
Yeah, thank you. I'm so glad actually that that came up because it does seem to be a little bit of a misunderstanding out in the community. So I'm glad the opportunity arose to clarify that. We do not require students to wear their masks outside unless they are playing a close contact game. Like if they're, like she said, like if you're leaning your heads together and playing jacks. Although, none of our students play jacks, I'm not gonna lie, but. So if they're playing a game where they are in closer contact, we do tell them that they have to wear their masks. Otherwise, masks come out, come off, I'm sorry, masks come off when they go outside. Um, and the beautiful thing about, somebody, one of the QVHD people actually asked me, you know, if there's anything from COVID that you would keep, what would it be? And my immediate answer was the amount of outdoor time our students are getting. That's the, that is why we are outside all the time. It is the opportunity to take those masks off and to spread out a little bit and see each other's faces and play together and talk together. And, you know, I have, I have teachers that go outside every single day for, for read aloud or for reading. Um, so we're outside for snack, we're outside for lunch, we're outside for just a quick movement walk break. So they take their masks off when they are outside. Um, so I just, I'm glad that I got the opportunity to clarify that. Some kids do like to keep them on. That is their preference, but it is not a requirement unless they're in close contact.
And, and on the issue, I'm Sarah Lynn.
Thanks for that, Lisa. Nursing supervisor is gonna.
Yeah. Yeah, the nursing supervisor, I anticipate will have a position filled by early next week at the latest on that. We are in contact with Dr. Martinello very frequently. I mean, our nurses, uh, as I'm reminded from time to time, you know, our nurses do excellent work and they're seeing the same kind of issues day after day. So while a particular issue might be new for one family and that family's child, it might be the twentieth example of that that the nurse has seen in that particular day. So we communicate with Dr. Martinello and, and certainly with QVHD on different kinds of issues regularly. And we, we feel comfortable about where you are. I do wanna say, and I, I really thank you for saying that, Erin. Uh, whether we have a nursing supervisor or not, the impact of, uh, this, uh, the, the current contact tracing or quarantine, which can come at very unexpected times, is significant on our teachers and our administrators. And, uh, and, and they're doing outstanding work under, in some cases, very adverse conditions. And we just ask everybody's grace with that because there's, there's no playbook with this. There just isn't. And we, we have eight hundred and fifty different students with different families who, as you can tell from even tonight's meeting, really feel differently about lots of aspects of this. So, so I appreciate those comments too. Thank you.
Outside, Erin? Great. Uh, Jay, you're next on my list. Do you have any questions or comments?
Okay, I just wanted to piggyback off Erin very quickly, outside time. So Lisa, excellent, they can take their masks off. This is great. They can see their smiles. They can see each other's faces. This is a wonderful thing. I think this really aids what Dr. Martinello was talking about with the social aspects of the school. So that's really good to know. And I think that's great you clarified that because I had some questions on that. The second part on, on that was, um, I'm gonna sort of piggyback off Jeff here. Jeff talked about quarantining whole classrooms. Now, am I right to believe that if a child is quarantined outside the school and they're required to quarantine, will that child be supported in terms of online instruction? Or will there be some sort of, um, asynchronous synchronous mechanism in place? And here, I have a twofold question. So the first question is what support are the teachers getting to ensure this is happening um, smoothly? And second, how are parents informed in the options or the choices they might have with respect to this?
Uh, Jay, there's current, um, there's current negotiations on that topic that we'd be discussing in executive session tonight. You know, i- in relation to all aspects of that, that relates to the topic we'll be discussing in executive session.
Anything else, Jay? Okay, great. Uh, Jeff, did you have any questions of Dr. Bud or anything else you wanted him to forward to Dr. Martinello?
Um, yes, thank you. So just a quick thank you to administrators and the teachers. I mean, these numbers are great. We're keeping our children safe. That's, that's a hu- huge, huge kudos to our staff there. Um, I'm glad to see the end of the slide. We're starting to bring back lunches. And thank you, Lisa, for clarifying the mask outside. Um, maybe we should make sure the teachers are aware of that. Maybe the diligence is still pretty heightened outside because we are getting reports of being, you know, masks required. But I'm glad you were able to clarify that. Um, one thing it comes up to in conversations from parents is class trips. Any class trips on the horizon and how come those aren't happening? Um, and also the no visitor policy too. Um, is there a reason why that is still going on? Just a couple of questions. Um, I have more, but we could stop there for a minute.
Sure. Lisa, do you wanna talk about the, the field trip part of it first?
Right, yeah, the field trip i- it has come up recently with teachers as well. And in order to make sure that we're maintaining our cohorting, that we're meeting our mitigation strategies, um, essentially what I have said to teachers who have inquired is that you'd have to come and talk to me about what the trip entails, if it is possible to even attend, um, the cost, the travel, what mitigation strategies are in place at the location. Um, there's, there's a lot. It's really quite complicated, um, even in terms of busing our students. Um, we would have to get separate buses for each classroom, which would obviously increase the cost of any trip that we would take. Um, so essentially, um, at the moment, we're not doing live field trips. But what I have said to teachers is come and talk to me if you find something and let's see if it's possible to do it. Um, the thought of sending our students to, you know, a theater production, for example, and, uh, listen, I'm a fan of the theater. I, I grew up a dancer. I love going to the theater. But the thought of sending our students to a theater where there may be students from, you know, three other elementary schools crammed into a space and sitting side by side, it, that's just not something that, um, any of us, I think, are comfortable with. So it really is dependent upon the location, the mitigation strategies at that location, what we can do as a school in order to ensure that our students are co-horted and safe. Um, so that's kind of where we are with that right now. It's, like I said, it, there's, it's quite layered. There's a lot to it.
And, and I, I think.
The visitor policy?
Yeah. I, I think that the idea of layers applies to that a little too, Jeff. The, um, superintendents in local districts even in BOA have taken some different approaches to that right now. Um, I think we have to, uh, my particular recommendation is to err at least in the moment and decide of being conservative with this in the fact that introducing volunteers into the environment will introduce of necessity, people who are not vaccinated, adults who are not vaccinated into the environment. And I'm not positive that all of our families would be comfortable with that, particularly when we've just introduced the staff vaccination mandate. And in addition, I'm sensitive to the administrative burden of some, uh, aspects of say, bringing a lot of additional adults into the environment at a time when it, as we've heard, we, we at the moment don't have a nursing supervisor to sort of be introducing other people who might have to demonstrate fully vaccinated status, et cetera. Um, I know the Safe Return Committee has talked about this, but is, is, um, it's, it's still an open discussion. We wanna encourage people coming into the school campus, but we wanna do it in a responsible way for everybody involved.
Great, thank you. And then maybe Dr. Bud, I don't think we got a detailed answer. Uh, why Orange, um, doesn't quarantine whole classrooms? Milford doesn't, Guilford doesn't. Um, so maybe you could use some of your contacts and find out what they're doing for their mitigation strategies and maybe mirror them so we can stop quarantining whole classrooms.
Yeah, I can speak most specifically to the conversations we've had within BOA. And I know that Bethany, just as of my conversation yesterday, is taking the same approach we are. Um, and Orange, you're right, I believe is taking a different approach. Um, from my understanding, and I think Dr. Martinello shares it, from what DPH has said, in order to quarantine a smaller amount of the class, we would have to have a lot more, uh, almost surgical-like precision as far as which students had worked with which students over the course of the day. We'd probably have to limit certain things like cooperative learning and learning centers in a way that we and at least Bethany have felt would, um, almost restrict the natural movement within elementary school classrooms. Um, and, uh, in addition, um, trying to ask, uh, elementary school teachers to kind of map every single day which students had come within certain amounts of feet for other students for so long would, would, in our opinion, really add a burden on teachers that, that almost would be unsustainable. Now, you, I think your question is well posed in the sense that maybe other districts are able to do that. Um, and I think that we see it on the horizon. Um, but right now, it would seem to be something that would not be really sustainable.
Um, and just one other question. Um, surveys were mentioned in depth tonight. Um, it might be worth looking into to put out a parent survey regarding COVID. Um, maybe we're under the assumption that this is a big pressure cooker. And there was a, a great case of assumption tonight. We all assumed kids were required to wear masks outside. I don't think everyone, I saw everyone's face. It was a big surprise that they weren't. Um, so I think a survey to parents, especially regarding COVID and their thoughts on it, I think would help give us direction. And, 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 um, the teachers, administrators, um, I think it would help us give us some type of direction. Um, it was very surprising to me that only ten percent of the population jumped on the, in the school testing. So, I don't know, just hypothetical, maybe only ten percent plan on getting vaccinated. So if our strategy is to aim towards vaccination, maybe we're heading in the wrong direction. So just for an example, I think that would be a great idea to give a parent, um, teacher survey the direction of COVID. Just get, gather people's thoughts and concerns on it. Um, maybe there is no concerns about, you know, children eating lunch together. So maybe we could bring in more classes together. Again, all hypothetical examples, but I think we really could, um, benefit from a survey from the parents and teachers. Uh, we were successful with the virtual learning and in-person learning. When, you know, we, we took a survey and we gathered data and we saw who's interested, who's willing. Um, that was, that was priceless. I think we're at a, a point now where we could benefit from a survey as well.
Thank you. I, I think you're done, Jeff. Okay, thanks. Um, Maria, did you have any additional questions?
Um, I did. And, uh, I think this one really, uh, is to be passed on to Dr. Martinello as well. Um, I'm also interested in the data, but interested in the data that she and her colleagues have kind of put together from the health district to look at, you know, what are, you know, some people call them endpoints, some people call, call them critical points. But at what points we will get to with vaccinate, vaccination status, with, um, community acquired, um, transmission of COVID that would allow us to relax mitigation strategies enough to allow for outdoor events, you know, with the community to possibly allow for some more field trips because we'd be more comfortable, um, with those strategies. You know, the goal is always to keep our, um, faculty and administration safe, to keep the students and their families safe. But if there were some endpoints that they were looking at with the data in regards to what we would, we would need to achieve as a community in order to be able to relax those mitigation strategies. And the second, uh, question is in regards to, I know last year, um, the weeks after the holidays, we planned an entire school quarantine. Were there any, was there any, have there been any discussions regarding what that might look like this year? For example, the week after the winter holidays or the week after Thanksgiving? Uh, was there any discussion on if those might be remote weeks for the entire school, anticipating travel for many in the community? Or if we were looking to go ahead again?
Maria, and, and thank you for the first, uh, set of questions. I'll pass that on to, to Dr. Martinello and to the QVHD people. Um, there, on the second point, there have not been conversations in BOA among that yet. Um, I could broach them, but I am not positive that that would align with the state guidance that there must be in-person learning unless you have an outbreak of COVID. And in other words, that the State Department really has not taken the position that what we did successfully last year in those quarantine weeks is allowable this year. Uh, but, but I, I could pursue that again with BOA and see if they agree with that.
I, it was just, you know, a question. I just was looking for some guidance so parents in the community aren't surprised by, you know, a, a decision that might come out later. I was just wondering if there, you know, if there was, um, from, from, I wasn't advocating for that. Just merely asking if that was a, you know, gonna be a possibility. So it didn't surprise people.
Yeah, I think it, it, it connects with that particular issue of what the, how the state has changed its requirements for this year. And, and I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you, Maria. Mike? Anything from you tonight on this?
Yeah, thanks. Um, yeah, a couple of questions about, um, um, mental health and in a general social, uh, well-being of kids. Um, we've talked about the, the importance of the social well-being, um, in terms of, um, you know, kids when they're out quarantined, um, the challenges that they face there. Um, and, um, what I've also been hearing, um, anecdotally from other schools across the state and actually elsewhere is that, um, when kids have returned to school this year, um, there, there's been an uptick of, um, behavioral problems, high rates of suspensions, high rates of expulsions. Um, I'm wondering whether we see any signs of that yet, um, at Beecher. Um, so that's my, that's my first question. And then the second question has to do more with mental health. Something I've just been, I've been w- wondering about and worried about is lots of people have lost someone important in their life to COVID. Um, and I'm wondering if we have any sense of how many kids in our community have been affected in that way? And, um, whether we're kind of keeping tabs on that to, um, make sure they're okay and offer, and offer supports for them.
Lisa, do you want to, do you wanna take those?
Yeah, um, um, I think that the, one of the biggest challenges is, you know, I think we all can acknowledge that living through this pandemic has, has caused trauma for everybody. And I think Dr. Martinello spoke to that earlier. Um, so is it causing trauma to our kids? Absolutely. Is it causing trauma to our teachers and our staff? Absolutely. Um, what that looks like on a daily basis i- is different for every person and every kid. So I would say that, you know, I, I could look through behavior, um, referrals and I could look through.
and I could look through students that we've had bus reports from and, and give you some, some numbers around that. But what I can tell you is that, um, every day i- is fluid. Some days we have zero behavior incidents and some days we have the typical kid things of so-and-so called me a not-nice name and so-and-so called me a not-nice name and so I decided to shove him, you know? So do I think that it's more extreme or severe than in years past? Absolutely not. Do I think that a lot of it is run-of-the-mill children stuff? Sure. Um, do I believe that some of it may be related to the pandemic? Yeah, because we're all kind of living under this, you know, cloud of a different world, right? So I think it's hard to sort of quantify, so I'm not sure I'm really giving you a good answer. But what I can tell you is that, um, it feels, that part at least at Beecher, kind of feels like normal. We don't have an excessive amount of behavior referrals. We don't have zero. Um, I do think that a lot of it does have to do with the pandemic. So I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not giving you a very good answer, but, um, but I, I, I think that we see it every single day in our kids. Um, and I think that our teachers are working incredibly hard to support them and to provide a safe space and to, you know, give them what they need to be successful, not just academically, but socially as well. And, and so that's why I really appreciated what Jonathan said earlier about just giving us a little bit of grace because we're all working really, really hard to not just teach them academically, but also just take care of them emotionally and socially and make sure that we're giving them the space to sort of be frustrated or to get mad and to let that out and then to sort of move on and go on about our day. And so I, I think that, I'm not sure I'm giving you an answer, I guess, but that, that's that. Um, and I'm already forgetting the second part of your, oh, the mental health and, yes. So, um, we have an amazing wellness team. They meet regularly with Cheryl Kiesel, I will say. And they, um, are already engaged fully in their counseling services. They're already doing their lunch groups. They're meeting with small groups of students, um, co- cohorting. They have to cohort those groups as well, but they are, um, doing all of that work on an ongoing basis. They are amazingly available when we say, hey, we have this kid that we're worried about. Can you check in on them? Um, so again, I, I don't know that I have a hard number of how many students in our building have lost somebody close to them due to COVID, but I can tell you that our teachers and our mental support staff are, um, working really, really hard. I mean, their, their days are booked solid and they're packed because they are with kids from the moment they walk in that door until the moment they leave for dismissal. Um, just supporting them and taking care of them. And then amazingly, sending out staff emails to sort of take care of ourselves and take care of each other. So it's sort of a two-pronged effort to make sure that the adults are taking care of themselves so that we can turn around and take care of the, you know, amazing little humans that we are entrusted with.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mike?
Nope, I'm good. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Sarah Beth? You're muted.
Sorry about that. Uh, my question would be about logical ways that we're quarantining. So we're quarantining a whole classroom and I'm not trying to make more work for anyone or put more people on quarantine, but I'm trying to understand how it makes sense that, so I have seven children. So one of my kids has a close contact and that child's quarantined. How does it make any sense that the rest of my kids aren't quarantined? I don't understand how. I, I just, it seems, I mean, we can't quarantine everybody, but we're quarantining whole classrooms. So how are we just sort of picking and choosing, I guess? And then my other question is when a child is sent home because they're maybe possibly have COVID, even though it's a cold, are, is someone coming in and wiping down the entire classroom so that if there's any germs that are there, they've been, is there a mitigation process for that? Or are we just kind of, again, picking and choosing what to do so that we feel like we're meeting some kind of guidelines? That's my question.
Please, sure. Li- Lisa, do you, do you want to take the first one as far as kind of the general approach? And I should say that this general approach is in, is in guidance within a, I believe it's Addendum Five. There's several addendums from the State Department of Education. We've actually, I've lost sight of what their addendums to, like what the original document is. But it's Addendum Five, are you telling me Lisa?
Yes.
And those outline the, uh, the definition of a close contact, et cetera. So we go back to that nearly constantly. And it might be a good opportunity for me to just to say before I answer it Lisa, um, some of these things as far as what metrics we might use to change, et cetera, are also governed by what the state documents, um, will allow. And so there, there are some restrictions as far as what we could not be able to do, even if we wanted to do it, right? In Woodbridge. But, but Lisa, you, you, you have handled some of these for sure very, very well. And how's that generally done, the close contact piece and the quarantining?
Yeah, right. Thanks for asking. Yeah, we are using Addendum Five as our guideline. Um, you could definitely look for it. It's just under the State Department of Education, Addendum Five. Um, so what I'll tell you is that, um, anybody who is considered a close contact, that's who has to quarantine. If they are a contact of a contact, then they do not have to quarantine unless the first person that was a close contact becomes symptomatic. So if, if you don't mind, I'm actually going to use names to make that make sense. So if my daughter Eliza is a close contact of somebody, my other daughter Emma does not need to quarantine because she was not a close contact of that individual. But if Eliza becomes symptomatic, then Emma would be considered a close contact and she would then need to quarantine. Um, so contacts of contacts basically do not have to quarantine. And that is, like I said, all laid out in Addendum Five. Um, when we have questions about that, we do speak with, um, our nursing department, of course. We reach out to Dr. Martinello, um, we call QVHD if we need to. So if there's ever a question, and, um, you know, there have been times where we've, you know, had a question about a particular case and we've reached out to our medical advisor, to Dr. Martinello, to QVHD to get clarification. But essentially contacts of contacts do not quarantine.
Okay. And, and so I understand that part, but I guess so, so I'll, so it was my child. So he was sent to the nurse's office, determined he needed to leave school immediately. So if, so I guess what I'm trying to figure out is if he had to leave immediately, couldn't there have been a good chance that all his sibling, he couldn't take the bus home? Couldn't there be a good chance that all his siblings also could have been, until we had a, a negative result? Wouldn't the whole group almost have to be quarantined if they're all in the same family? Wouldn't they all be at that point considered like a close contact for one another? Or no?
Not until you get a positive result. Because it could just be a cold, right? I mean, since COVID symptoms do mirror cold symptoms or allergy symptoms. And, you know, as Dr. Martinello pointed out, you know, nurses are not, until you get that COVID test, we're not sure. So what would happen is that, um, your child who is sent home, if they get a positive COVID test, then your other children would need to, um, quarantine because then they would be close contacts. But they wouldn't knock out their other classes. Only the co- COVID positive student would quarantine the entire class. Does that make sense?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Makes your head spin a little bit, doesn't it?
A whole lot.
Thank you, Sarah Beth. Um, so I don't have any, um, additional questions, but I do have a comment to make. And the comment is that last year at this time, um, we continue to remind, as, as Dr. Bud pointed out, that there is no playbook for this. No one was trained, no one was prepared for this. And so I want to take a moment to acknowledge the staff, the entire staff, the custodians, the bus drivers, the teacher assistants, the, um, lunch people, the office people, um, for all that they've done. They did it last year and folks, we thought maybe this year we weren't, wouldn't be here, but we are. And so I want to acknowledge them, take a moment and thank them for all of the, um, amazing work that they do on a daily basis. Particularly, and particularly our administrators who kind of run the show for us. Um, Lisa especially, I'm going to, to, you know, call you out because you did, you were here last year at this time doing that. And, um, did an amazing job and you're still here. And it's, there is still no playbook. And so I thank you from the bottom of my heart and from the hearts of all of those 850 kids that, um, you touch upon each day. Um, you're amazing. So, uh, thank you to all our administrators, everyone who walks in this door every day. Um, because we have a whole bunch of questions that, um, we just threw out at the administrators and they're the ones who deal with these things every single day. And our teachers deal with them, our teacher assistants. So I really, I can't thank you enough. So, thanks.
Thanks Lynn for saying that. Um, I, I don't know if you all remember this, but you all appointed me as principal on February 23rd and then March 20th, we shut down. So I almost feel like I was an unlucky charm. But Lynn, thank you for saying that. And I just want to chime in and say that it's a team. Honestly, none of it could happen without Dr. Bud, without Cheryl, without Jimmy, without all of these teachers and the staff. So it's a team effort. But thank you so much because that means a lot to all of us. We're working really, really hard. We're doing the best we can. Um, and, you know, I think the one thing that you can say about all of us is that we care very, very deeply about the students and the staff and the parents and the community. So Lynn, thank you so much for saying that.
Lisa, I thank you. Um, I noted that last, um, that on Friday it was National Bosses Day. And I thought, you know, um, we as board members should be thanking all the bosses at Beecher Road School for what they do every single day. So, um, hope you had a happy National Bosses Day and, uh, maybe did a little celebrating over the weekend too. So to all of you, um, Jonathan, Cheryl, Jimmy, Lisa, um, Richard, all the people who make the school work. Thanks a lot.
Lynn, Lynn, if I, if I may, I, I just want to end, if I could, this piece by reminding everybody that Thursday evening, as, as I even blasted earlier today, will be an open community forum, really for parents and guardians who would like to come and explore the, the same kind of topics. Uh, we'll actually try to get some answers to the specific questions. Dr. Martinello will be there again Thursday night, which is why we picked that particular time. So, uh, parents or guardians who might be on this call, who are interested in giving their feedback or getting questions answered, just, you know, uh, the board members did that here, but feel free to come Thursday night as well or to email questions that you might have, okay?
Yeah, thanks for that Jonathan, for that reminder and that shout out to the community. So, um, I, I hope that anyone else who has questions will jump on that call as well. Um, great. I, unless somebody else has something else they want to say, I think we got through everybody. Wonderful. We're going to move on to the next topic.